It's three o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting order. If you will please join us for the closing meetings.
Let's leave and do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless Americans. If anybody has one of these devices with them, if you please turn it to silent so we don't have phone ringing or anyone being, thank you. I'll call and roll our district attorney, Anthony Pierce.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Tinkle is here, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Feinberg, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, and our district manager, Chris. And we have people signed up to speak.
Yes, we have two today. And number one was Mr. Jim Brand, Avalon Circle. Here to speak about the budget, district office site, and building property.
Good afternoon and happy belated Fourth of July. It was a wonderful day yesterday. It's a wonderful day today. Margaret, Chairperson, I love your outfit.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm James.
We're that same thing.
Also, good afternoon, I'm James Brand, 10154 Avalon Lake Circle, Hampton Park. I'm a HOA resident board director and a member of the Hampton Park Ad Hoc Committee. I know you missed me at your last meeting. Every time I come, Chris says, "Oh, Jim, are you speaking again?" But today I am. Thank you, first of all, at your last meeting for taking care of the easement issue on Bellcrest in Hampton Park. Tony, thank you very much for the work that you did to make that happen. We appreciate it. On the 21st of June, I was in Tulsa. The one, the young man with his eyes closed in that photograph flew with me from Fort Myers to Tulsa to visit his four cousins. I stayed in the hotel, thank goodness. By eight-thirty every night, I was exhausted from being with those five boys. The amount of energy is just amazing that they create. You just don't think you're in a house anymore. You have a playground. Five of my sons, grandsons, that picture shows them with their new hairdos. Thank goodness that dye washed out that night. Such fun. I had several neighbors who've seen that photograph. They want to know when I was getting my doo done. Now, back to business. Today, I want to discuss the preliminary fiscal year 19 budget, the new district office site, and new building proposal. I know that both of those issues are on the agenda later, so my remarks may have to be revised after I hear about those comments and what you plan to do with those comments and discussions. I provided you copies of my budget analysis and my perspective on the new building. I'm not gonna go through that in detail. I know all of you can read and will take my comments to heart and seriously. I made a public records request for fiscal year 19, fiscal year 15 to 19 budget trending analysis. And the corroboration of data on the assertion by the Board of Supervisors on June the 14th that Gateway Services, the CDD, assessments are the lowest in the area. Neither was available from public records. I created a trend line analysis that Stephen Bloom has reviewed and confirmed is accurate. And I assume that the comment about lowest in the area was hyperbolic. An increase of Area 1 and Area 2 assessments by over 27% in fiscal year 19 over fiscal year 18 is just unacceptable. You gotta figure out something else. I propose cutting the stormwater system cleaning in half to 250. I know in 2018, I think you award a contract to have some of it cleaned done for $225,000. So we can decrease that a little bit for next year. My preference is that it be eliminated altogether from the budget and that a low-interest bond be used to pay for this type of expense over a five-year period. However, I don't think you can get that done in the time remaining for fiscal year 19. I urge you to get a bond for this type of expense going forward. Stephen should recommend the amount of the bond and their expenses that it should be useful. To have this type of extraordinary expense in a single year is not good financial practice, in my opinion. I also propose decreasing the end-of-year fiscal year 19 capital fund by $100,000. Together, this decrease of $350 in assessments results in a much more reasonable year-over-year increase of 13.5%. Still outrageous, but sellable. The discussion of funding for a new building is premature. Thank goodness, a Girl Scout building couldn't go forward. Until you consider other options, as I suggest to you, you expect, you can't expect the taxpayers and your constituents to support a new building of any kind. Everyone I speak to about this issue gets very upset, especially considering huge increases in their assessments, their taxes from, uh, in 2019. Fiscal year 2019. Please ask the staff to come up with other short-term ways to handle space. Finally, on the 3rd, I toured the building. Went upstairs to the hot room or the hothouse, as you all call it. You've got paper everywhere, records that are very valuable. What happens if you have a fire? What is humidity doing to that paper? If it stays there much longer, it's gonna be unusable. I suggest you find a temporary, uh, no, a permanent storage space off-site that has a light kind of environment for paper storage, so that it's available when you need it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Brand, your timing was excellent.
I'm good. I'm learning. I'm learning, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
And our second and last speaker, Francis Iannucci. And he is here to speak about maintenance of Commerce Lakes Drive between Daniels and Gateway Boulevard.
All right, Francis Iannucci, I live at 12230 Country Day Circle. That's in Daniels Preserve at the end of Gateway Boulevard. Again, I was here a couple of weeks ago.
Would you spell your name for me?
Sure. I.A.N.N.U.C.C.I. First name Francis with an I. Okay, I am representing the board. I'm not a board member. I'm a member of the Finey Kennedy of the HOA Daniels Preserve. But our concern is that we were wondering who is going to take care of the maintenance of Commerce Lakes Boulevard between Daniels, between Daniels Parkway and Gateway Boulevard. Those are two main arteries, so it's a connecting road. So it can't in any way be considered a private road. And right now, and I've mentioned before, our HOA is paying to have the south side of the grass cut that abuts the lake. Of course, we don't own the lake, we don't own the homes, the lake, but we take care of that because it's right opposite our main gate and it wasn't being maintained and it just looked horrible for people approaching our neighborhood. It's my understanding that a commercial group, including the brewery, are paying to keep the streetlights on. So again, my concern is that if we stop maintaining the grass and they stop paying for the streetlights, what happens? Now, I was, I think you guys had mentioned that you were gonna maintain it up to the end of Love Child, which is kind of an imaginary line. There's only 3500 more feet between there and the end of Daniels, and the entrance to Daniels Parkway. Someone's gonna have to maintain that road. If a podo opens up right outside our main gate and we only have one way in and out, who do we call? I don't know. The second thing is since Skywalk was built, and I love Skywalk, people traveling west on Daniels turn into Commerce now so they can get to Gateway Boulevard by, and avoid the light, because the light backs up now because there's a lot more traffic. So when I pull out of the main gate, my main gate onto Commerce Lakes, probably four out of five times that I do, somebody passes me going about 40 or 50 miles an hour, racing from Daniels to Gateway to avoid the light. And that can't be avoided. Traffic's gonna be there. So someone either has to maintain that road because of the increased traffic and because it's not being maintained, or someone has to barricade the entrance of Daniels Parkway. Anyway, I don't know if you've had time to consider it. I'm trying to avoid legal letters from the board and all that stuff. I'm just hoping that common sense will prevail because I know that you probably maintain it going the other way, all the way out towards the plantation. And if you're gonna maintain it up to the end of Love Child, we're only talking about another 3/4 of a mile to the end of the road. And most of that is just that one area of grass cutting and then the road if something happens in the future. So that's all I have.
Chris, do you have any comment on that as far as who owns it or have you made any headway in finding out who's responsible or what our options are?
My information is limited at the moment to that section that is supposedly under CDD ownership from Love Child up to Gateway Boulevard. And it's my understanding that the rest of it is still a private road.
This is the one I've been talking about for a couple of years. It's a property owners' association that went defunct. And the issue is I would have absolutely no problem of the CDD taking over that road because it's no different than West Links, Commonwealth Drive, any of the other roads that are multipurpose use, not just beneficial to preserve and/or the brewery or anybody else down there. How it got divided at Love Child where WCI owned the first 800, 900 feet and the property owner association owned from there to Daniels is beyond me. That dissolution happened seven, eight, nine years ago. As I understand it, talking with Tony, and he can expound on this, but we can't do anything. Our hands are tied because that POA doesn't exist. We need a board member from that prior deal to take an action, to be able to do something. And their options are basically do nothing, which they have done well, recreate the POA, which a lot of people probably will object to because that means there's gonna be dues and fees that they have to pay that they're not paying now to maintain lights, street signs, and all the other stuff. Sidewalks, landscaping, all nine yards. Or dedicate it to us and then we take it over as one of our seven other roads that we have in the district. Those last two can't be done without an action of a board member of that POA, as I understand it.
I haven't pulled up my memos on all that, but if it was resolved corporation, an officer-director, the time of dissolution, can execute documents, or as I've mentioned in the fairway relates, the other one. The property owners can petition the circuit court or point a trustee. And if it was to happen, again, that's the impetus and that onus is on the property owners to engage in that activity. That's what they should talk with their attorney about. It is not a district road. It's, and so if you send letters to this district, it's gonna, the comments back will probably frankly be, you need to consult an attorney to follow the statutory process to either have the requisite right to convey that road and then come back to the board and ask the board to accept the roads. And the question becomes whether the district will require those roads to be going up to current standards or not. And then we have other title issues, but that's, I can give you a copy if you leave your email address before you leave. All of my memos I did for the other areas that have problems with the property owners' association, that should give you some guidance.
But at our last meeting, we instructed Chris to make contact with people in those three areas, we've got three of them, and see what the interest of those people are in doing something, taking an action. And so I think the ball is in our part to go to them to see if anybody is willing to take the bow by the horns and try to move this along.
So it can't be dedicated because the people that control it are no longer here?
It's already been dedicated on the plats, and I'm having trouble bringing up the plats. There's already a dedication of a roadway track. So the question is to who has the proper title to be able to further convey the road by D is something that, again, that's where the rub is.
So it can't be considered abandoned, which would then allow you to step in?
To my knowledge, no. And we can't just step in if it's abandoned. That's not our, we don't have municipal powers. We have, and to acquire a title, we have to have it conveyed by the person that has proper title. We can't just take it.
Where can we find historical information on who that functioning POA was and who were the?
I can go back and look. I think I've looked at it before, along with all the others for the last few years. I had difficulty accessing my files.
It was a Worthington POA is what the name of it was, and that's why it shows on LIPA right now. But it was seven, eight, nine years ago. They dissolved. And we've, we've this, we've got three of these. Three of them.
What I could do, again, Chris reaching out to the property owners, if I can send Mr. Iannucci my memo I provided, it's a public record. I can gladly do that for you. And again, I think that's something you may want to consult with the attorney for the association as to how they'll follow the statutory steps in order to achieve that.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
And like I said, you can jot down your email address. Oh, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think I went to high school with an I, I'm 35% Italian.
Yeah, well, I'm originally from New York.
I'm from Rochester.
All right, yeah, I actually.
That's enough of that. We'll talk later.
I do appreciate it. Like I said, if you need to do something, you'd be led to do it. I'm just looking, there's no immediate danger. And, you know, we're cutting the grass and looking, but eventually something's gotta be worked out because something's gonna happen and then we're not gonna know who to call because there's gonna be no.
It'll get solved when there's a wreck and somebody gets hurt.
Yeah, and that, we don't want that.
That's when it's gonna get solved.
And in front of that extra traffic, we're getting to that point. Anyway, thank you very much. A way to hear from you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I can't retrieve it now. I apologize.
Do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
No, we don't. That's it.
Before we do staff reports, there was a request to move 5D up to the beginning of the meeting because we have a gentleman here who would like to discuss this item.
We could do that with Tony's, because that's part of Tony's presentation.
Tony's not really on the agenda this time.
I kinda snuck in on your Chris's item on utility.
He snuck in with an email of all of us. It was 140 pages long.
I think it was 120 more.
So you're, Tony.
Well, I think, yeah, Chris, yes, under Title 5D, like in David, Chris had provided a memo to the board with regards to the query from the Club of Gateway by Mr. Lynn. I think Mr. Lynn is here. I think he's already registered to speak on his topic. No? But he may want to, but after, and this issue came to my attention back in June, about June 8th or so. And I did some initial research of minutes and board meetings and various documents. And the permit, just for simple, I'm trying to make it simple, the permit is currently held by the district, by the CDD, for those five wells. And it's that permit that's referenced in the, in the material. It's a South Florida Water Management District Permit, number 36-00677-W. I could not find, again, I had all these caveats in my memorandum because to the extent that there was evidence of an agreement, I didn't find any, but again, I went through the minutes, didn't see any in the minutes that I reviewed. But to the extent that someone has an agreement that they can provide, that's something that can be looked at. But these five wells are, were built by the district and are contracted. The district had it with a well driller. Initially financed by a finance agreement with WCI. And then there was a borrowing that took those out. And then subsequently, the wells apparently did not produce the amount or volume of water as indicated. And it seemed to become relatively inoperable back in 96, 97, from the standpoint of pumping. And then in 2005, the district applied for a 20-year extension of the permit. And at that time, asked that the wells be put on standby. And I put in my memo, the excerpt from that permit application, it's at page three, that the withdrawal facilities consist of five water table aquifer wells and three pumps. The applicant, which was the CDD, has requested that the wells be placed on standby status due to the expansion of the surface water management system at the project. The lake system is sufficient to supply all the golf course's irrigation needs. The wells have not been operated for eight years, so that's as of 2005. The assessment addresses the on-site lakes only, see Exhibit 7 for historical withdrawals. And also attached to the number of reports that were sent, that's the bulk of these, by Terry and then by a separate company, I think once Kenny got on board, that shows no flows, no withdrawals from the wells for a substantial number of years. And they're still in a standby status. And my understanding is it would take a substantial amount of money to rehabilitate these pumps and wells as well as the line, an eight-inch line that goes from the wells to the lake. I know the memo said six, but I think all the materials I saw saw it reference eight-inch line.
I don't know that that's factual. Nobody's tested it.
Okay, but it said eight inches.
Well, no, it's eight inch height, that there's, nobody's gonna even test to know that it's not operable or not.
Okay. And again, that's just what my understanding is, that from the standpoint of what is indicated on the permit files. And the board has a couple of options. Again, I've provided my opinions that I'm not aware of, never divided any written agreement between the Club or its predecessors and the district for the district to operate on pain the wells. I'm not aware of any verbal agreement. I'm not aware of any obligation, in my opinion, the district has no obligation to modify the permit, to remove the five wells from standby status. If the wells are inoperable, and due to the conditions, as I understand, of the wells and pumps, the district may want to consider filling and abandoning the wells in accordance with the permits. And then it could, or it could restore the wells, pumps, and irrigation lines to an operating condition. In that case, it appears that the only beneficiary of the wells is the golf course, I think 84 plus or minus acres. And so the board would need to consider funding sources for that.
I know you want to speak.
And I stand to be corrected in anything that we say. Okay, fair enough.
First of all, we gotta go back and understand, there's no contract, because at the time, this was done in 1986. The country store was owned by Westinghouse Gateway Communities. They owned the country club, they owned the community, they owned everything. So it would have been ridiculous to have a contract with themselves. So that's the way it was in 1986. I wish David Caldwell was here tonight, because I talked to him on this subject. And his name, if you've read all the meeting minutes, his name comes up quite a few times. As best I can get from him, what the thought was that the CDD should be involved in this. One is it was a reuse water issue for which the CDD had operating permits to begin with. So they thought that that was a, an acceptable continuation rather than having the country club having a private, or they themselves, as the country club, having a separate permit. So that's how that came about. His recollection was that the watering of that golf course was a benefit to the entire community because if that golf course went down, then the Gateway project went down. And so that's why I believe that those wells were put in by the GSD and ran. It's a little different than what Tony said on how it was intended. The original intent was, and I've been here since 91 and on the country club. The intent was those five wells and the transmission line that comes across Pine Crest, the FPL easement Pine Crest into Gateway and dumps into the lake right next to the country club had a, what we call a butterfly valve on it, a float-operated butterfly valve. Well, a float-operated butterfly valve works very well if it's got some type of electrical or control device that says to the pump that when the float goes down, it turns on the pump. Ours wasn't that kind. So in order to make it work, the pump had to be running all the time against a dead wall. You know, it was closed, valve was closed. It only opened when the water level dropped down. The intent was, or the original deal, was whenever the weir on our basin four dropped below 22 elevation, which was control, that valve was to operate. And this was to be a continuous deal. And essentially, starting in October, when our water levels dropped down, it would have come on and just augmented the water supply in the pond by continuing to run until the water level got up to control and shut it off. Well, that never happened. What in fact happened was those first five, six, seven years, they turned it on on an as-needed basis. And I think when they went back to, and they being the club or the CDD, and I don't know, I guess at that time it was Cal and, I think this was even before Bill Knight, so I don't know who the district manager was before Bill. But somebody put in a request to the county to extend the deal for 20 years. And in the interim, the club told the CDD and South Florida Water Management District that it's no longer a necessity to have it operate all the time, which it never did anyway. But it went on what they called a standby basis, and a 20-year extension from 2005 to 2025 was granted. Now, there were some stipulations that you had to file reports and usage and all this. The only time I can remember, when I was president in eight, we had the water level get scary low. And we turned those wells on and it worked. It worked.
What year?
I think it was 2008, Bill.
08?
08, yeah. We turned it on and it, it did work. Now, when you're putting the water in there at a couple hundred gallons per minute, you know, that's like a flea on an elephant's, you know what, as far as showing any incremental increase in the height of the water. But what we were trying to do is to offset the loss, such that we tried to stay status quo and not have the water level drop down to where we couldn't pump any more water from the lakes because there was nothing in there. So that was the, the theory behind it. I believe, I'm not gonna speak for, I'm not on the board of the club anymore, it's privately owned. And Jimmy's the operating manager of the club, but I think the issue is the club certainly wants to see that left and be operable for the basis that it still has the same problem that it had in 1986. And that is, that grass goes brown and that club goes down, there's gonna be 1,300 homes in the rest of Gateway that goes down too. It's an incremental part of the community, and I think that's what Westinghouse saw in 1986, and that's why they did it. So I would be all for, at this time, at least taking the first step of getting somebody out of the well supply company. Get them out, check those wells. And specifically, what I would do is we know that one of them has a pretty good flow rate, or it did. God only knows where it's at now, having not operated for maybe 10 years, to see what kind of yield it'll develop. Turn it on, and then the second thing is see what happens to the torsman. That torsman has been in the ground, but keep in mind, there's water in it and it's set. It just hasn't had water flowing through it. But we need to find out what the situation is, in my opinion, before we just go out and say on the trail, like, it doesn't work. Well, it hasn't worked because we haven't checked to find out what's wrong. And find out what the order of magnitude is on this.
I'm gonna stop you there. Would you like to speak on this subject, because I know that you did, you did come in and say?
Thank you for your time. So, I mean, we just bought the club on March 30th.
Please step up to the podium and give us your name.
Jimmy Lynn and my partner, Don Garrett, now, we bought the club on March 30th. We closed. And, you know, we were, the water levels were already extremely low when we got there. So I brought in a new superintendent. We started asking around a little bit. And I didn't even know that these wells existed, but we were just a couple inches from our intake. There's an intake that extends out into the pond behind the clubhouse, and that's where we draw our water out to irrigate the golf course. And we put out about 700,000 or 800,000 gallons of water a night. So it's a lot of water.
How many gallons?
700,000 or 800,000 is a full watering. Obviously, this time of year, we cut way back. But, you know, during season, we put about 700,000 or 800,000 gallons of water out a night to keep the place looking good. So we realized that the lake levels were really low, and we were literally two or three inches from the top of the intake. So that's when we started digging a little deeper, and we were very concerned, obviously, for ourselves as new owners, but also for the community and the membership and everything else like that. But that's when, actually Kenny took my superintendent and I out and we ran up and down the FPL easement and saw the five wells. And, you know, we don't, we, we did actually get a price on pulling one, but we didn't really know whose they were. So we're still kinda trying to figure it out, to be honest. We don't really know whose they are or how much it would cost to fix. Or maybe we don't even have to fix them all, but if we could get a couple of them working, or a couple of the ones that run have more gallons per minute, it might offset. So I'm not standing up here asking for really anything except for us to just kinda work together and partner up and make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing for the club, the community, and the wells are there. I think it'd be a shame to abandon them because to get water and well permits is, you know, as you guys know, is very difficult these days. So there is a permit in place. It's under the hall's name. And it is meant to feed that, that supply over there so we can keep the golf course green. So that's, that's only, that's, that's our scare, is that, you know, we're gonna run out of water. And then what? You know, the club will go down and you'll have a whole bunch of mad members and community people, so.
Mr. Guy, you have a comment or a question?
You were your partner to a... Did you diligence before you purchased the club?
Absolutely.
And did you determine that there was sufficient water available to put out 800,000 gallons, 800,000 gallons every night?
You know, we've, the wells, not the wells, but the lake has never gotten down below the intake level. I used to run the club. I used to run the club years ago, so I was at the club as the general manager like five or six years ago, for four years. Even then, I didn't know that these wells existed. So it's all new information to me. So, yeah, we did do due diligence, but, you know, that didn't show up as part of our ownership and we didn't purchase those wells, so they didn't, how would we, how were we to know that they were even there or part of the purchase? Because they weren't. They weren't part of the asset purchase that we bought.
I understand that getting, excuse me, a permit for new wells is expensive and time consuming and that using these might be to the club's benefit. Are you willing, or is the club willing to pay for the cost of rehabilitating those wells?
I'm not sure. I think it's something we should look at. I'm not sure who's really responsible for them at this point. I know they're not ours, they're really yours, so, I mean, I think that's what we have to figure out.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, I do. I just wrote stuff down from Mr., from the attorney's email. But in December second, two thousand and five, and I just went by pages, it said it did not need supplemental withdrawals from these wells, and that's what I read. So I'm confused. Why do we need supplemental withdrawals when it said in the letter, two thousand and five, that we didn't? And all the rummage, is that what is it, rummage reports?
Compage.
Compage, well, okay, close, thank you. They say from two thousand and five, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, that the wells were not in service. So I don't know how they could have ran in two thousand and eight when they said it, they weren't in service.
We didn't fill out the paperwork.
Well.
The CDD didn't fill out the paperwork.
Okay, so that's why I was a little bit confused there. I know it did say that in February of eighty-eight, that we did, they were transferred to CDD. But it also has, that there were some limited conditions. And I'm not quite sure where those limited conditions apply, so I was, I'm confused to that too. So I wanted to, more details about that.
Mr. Guy?
What's, what's the reason why we're discussing this? Is this because there's a need there?
And it's a need, yeah, there's definitely a need because it's a safety factor. The answer Catherine's question or issue was that up until two thousand and five, the intent of this was that these would be full time. Anytime the water level went below the control elevation, that never happened. But what they recognized in two thousand and five, when they went back for the permit extension, was that up till then, it had been frequently used as a standby. And so they changed it from a permanent deal to a standby. And I think you'll find that in the application to South Florida Water Management District in two thousand and five, extending it for twenty years, all five wells went from a permanent use to a standby because that, in actuality, is what happened. They only needed is whatever you have a drought.
So what it boils down to is, in order to get one or all operable, that's going to be at a cost, then who's going to cover that cost?
I think, well, I think the first thing is, because that's just a guess, I think the first thing that needs to be done is we need to go out, since they're ours, is to go out and find out what the issue is. Find out what's wrong with the wells, get a firm in here that professionally does that work. Check the wells out, and I totally agree with Jimmy, start with the one that eels the most. Why, some of those were really getting down to where I can spit more water than comes out of them. But start on those, check, find out what's wrong with it, what needs to be replaced. Try to pressurize it to see that the force main works. And it doesn't blow, and sprout up and have water fountains all the way between here and the golf course. So we have an idea of the order of magnitude of the cost. I'm sorry, Bill.
I said that's one way of doing it.
I don't know any other way of doing it.
I, and I, I wanted to hear what the other supervisors, what their thoughts were on this. To my understanding of this is that the only entity that benefits from these wells is the golf course.
No.
And the homeowners.
No, all the homeowners.
All the homeowners?
You're good. In Gateway Greens, there's thirteen hundred and fifty homes. Four hundred and ten belong to the club. Eight hundred and some don't belong to the club. Thirty percent of the people that live on the golf course only belong to the club. Seventy percent don't belong to the club, and they are impacted by the value and the asset that the club creates.
But again, I just preface that, their individual yards are not being irrigated from the lakes.
These wells will supply the golf course.
Only.
Only, right?
Oh, yes, totally. That was a part of the permit.
That's what I wanted to clear up. So what, in essence, I don't feel comfortable asking all of the residents of Gateway to pay to refurbish something that only benefits the golf course that is now privately owned. I don't know how you, how I can justify that.
I can make the same argument for the soccer field.
But it's.
Same argument.
Well, the amenities are public, I mean, they're where the golf course is.
Anybody can join the club, but the issue is that you've got eight hundred property owners that are impacted by that golf course. That golf course goes down and property values are going to drop like a rock. So it's, benefits more than the owners and or members of the club.
And, but I guess my question is, if you, if the, is the golf club or the golf course, are you willing to take over ownership and control and maintenance of those wells?
Are you saying you're going to assign those over to me?
I don't know what the legal process is. I'm just asking if you're willing to do that.
I don't know. I think it's something we have to look at. I mean, I think it'd be good for everybody. I don't see why we couldn't partner up together on something, because it is not only in the club's best interest, it's in the community's best interest for sure. The homeowners that live around the golf course. If the golf course runs out of water, it's going to be very bad.
Mrs. Flaherty, do you have a comment?
I did have a comment about the golf course. Only people who benefit from the golf course are ones who pay to join. The rest don't benefit if they don't join, so they have to pay to join. So in my case, they could, they should, if there'll be a pay to join the golf course, and those are the wells for there, they should cover that.
Seventy percent of the people that live on the lake and or with a golf course view are not members of the club. And their property values, you would, let's talk to any realtor, that value added of living on the lake or the golf course raises the value of that property substantially. You're talking about lots that are a hundred to a hundred and forty thousand dollars on the golf course, go across the street, they drop to forty thousand.
And I understand.
So it's impacted greatly by that view.
And I understand what you're saying. I understand the benefit of that. But the people that just bought the golf course are not going to allow it to deteriorate. They, they pay a lot of money for it, so, you know, this is part of owning something, is paying to irrigate it. It, I, it's still, I don't see where it's our responsibility to make sure that the golf, golf course stays green. I'm not sure I, I understand.
That was a commitment that I believe Westinghouse Gateway Communities made in nineteen eighty-six when they did what they did. I disagree. I believe they did do that.
A lot of developers made a lot of promises to a lot of homeowners.
If I may add, concern I have about this is obviously the outlay of funds, and we don't know what condition those lines are in. I think they're going to be in horrible condition, requiring a lot of money, and the pipeline's probably compromised. But as a utility, I can't give away water. I don't have a service contract with the golf club, I don't have a deposit, I don't have an impact fee, I don't have a dime from them. So I don't see why I would go out and take customers' money to benefit a private industry.
Let's, let's look at, let's talk about that. Gateway Golf and Country Club pays two hundred and twenty-six equivalent residential units. That's a hundred thousand plus a year for the general O O one account assessment. What do they get for that? A hundred thousand a year, and they have been paying that for eighteen years. What do they get for that? I missed my case.
Well, again, those are operating maintenance assessments for all the other infrastructure in the community, including drainage, water management, layers and roads. And as Chris mentioned, this is an enterprise fund. And I don't know if the golf course was paying anything beforehand for this, as far as, like Chris said, there was no agreement in place. And that's a difficulty I would have also, is you have a user of the district's utility service that's not paying anything, or to our knowledge, we're not aware of that paying anything. We recognize it might be a benefit to various properties, but here we have one owner who's basically asking for free service. And you have a serious, you have a great schedule for utility service that might need to be modified because the unique system here, here, generally, it's the irrigation system that starts right here. And that reuse water, irrigation water, and it goes to everybody, as opposed to one, I'll call it a dedicated irrigation system. And that's where you run into an issue about using the other utility funds to pay for that.
But Tony, if that was true, don't you think Westinghouse would have accounted for that in nineteen eighty-six when they cut the deal?
I don't know.
They would, they would have, there would have been a drop dead date or something like that. So I go back, if you read the history, you read the history of how it was done, and talk to somebody like David Caldwell, I think you'll find that it was done because a developer, Westinghouse Gateway Communities, knew that that golf course and its success was what was going to make this community survive. And I think that still, still is applicable. Whether it's a private country club or it's owned by a private owner, to me, makes no difference. The, the deal was made between one entity, it was made between Gateway Services CDD, owned and ran by David Westinghouse in nineteen eighty-six, and a country club that was owned by Westinghouse in nineteen eighty-six.
And, and I believe this board was controlled by Westinghouse.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying. If they wanted, if they wanted to have something, they could have memorialized it then.
Yeah, and the board's perspective, I don't think, I think it's a good idea to have the system tested because we probably need to do it, I think, just anyways for our permit compliance. And I think that would be a starting point to ascertain what the next step might be from the standpoint of action by the board, one way or another.
Mr. Guy?
This reminds me of a school board meetings I used to sit through where everybody's got the answer, but they don't even know the questions.